Oops, I lost rest. Hello.
Hey Alan, how are you?
Good. Did everybody fare up there okay with all the rain?
Jackson County did. We got lucky.
Hayward is unbelievable.
I saw pictures of Canton, just crazy.
It was starting to get close here. It was coming out of the manholes down here and starting to pull up in front of our house. It always gets high in the back. So just about the time it stopped, I was getting a little nervous.
Yeah, you're, you're right there beside Scott's Creek, so, yeah.
We've looked at those planning maps, haven't we John? With the flood plain covering my neighborhood.
Yeah. Well, I've got five o'clock. Should we go ahead and start?
So, I just got an email from Rose. She's gonna need to call in, so I'm sending her that information now.
Okay, I'll wait just a second.
Karen, did you have one other person coming on?
No, Daniel was only gonna be if I could not, if you couldn't be, if I had that conflict. So I was able to jump out of that meeting. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Looks like Rose is still connecting there. Well, man still says she's connecting. Is that same as you have?
Yes.
I, I think she was gonna be driving, so she may be in and out during the meeting. So I don't know if we want to proceed.
Yeah, why don't we just go ahead and start and get the minutes taken care of there.
So boy, you can just. We'll just wait on the minutes until the next meeting, because you don't have a quorum.
Okay, that's good. We'll just wait on that then. So we will just move, well, I said we don't have any public comment.
No.
If no public comment, we'll go ahead and go, turn it over to Karen. Withers Ravenel, thank you Karen for being here today.
Thank you as always for having us. Today, we actually put together a PowerPoint presentation, so to facilitate some of our discussion. Main reason is because one of the things we're gonna be talking about today is signs, and we thought it might be a little bit easier to see a visual rather than just kind of talking about it arbitrarily. I apologize for the noise in the background. I am sitting outside at a Starbucks, so I will try to talk over the background noise as much as possible. Let me share my screen. Is that okay if I share screen, everybody? Let me figure out on here. Okay, can you guys all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so just, um, let's see, let's go to the next one. Okay, so the first one we wanted to talk about, and again, this is just to give you a little bit of an update on the subdivisions. So Article Six is basically what was previously your subdivision ordinance, and we've changed that to incorporate it now as, you know, part of the UDO or part of the LDO. So what we're putting this in together, this isn't anything pretty. So this is, all this is, is just the technical way of how subdivisions has been. We didn't really do a lot of addition into the subdivision over what already existed. A lot of this is what you already had, and we're just bringing it over and reformatting. I'm sorry, boy, do you have a question? Oh, okay. I think you were just raising your hand. Okay, so, again, the majority of these updates that we did do in this were mandated from 160D. One of the other things we took out of subdivision ordinance, and we just combined that into that administrative section in the ordinance, so that there's just one administration. So that talks about all the different types of applications that are coming in. It doesn't discriminate against just subdivision or site plan. All the applications are together in one chapter, and that's gonna be in, again, your administration chapter. The one thing that we did include from the county were the regulations for road standards. So that's the maintenance design of roads, and we used, again, the county regulations as a guide for that. There was some, oh, sorry, there was some additional easement discussion about just adding in these easements and stuff. Again, very similar to what you already had. We just put a little bit more language into them about utilities, drainage, preservation of waterways, stormwater drainage, protection from flooding, lots, etc. All those design regulations that take place in a subdivision or needed for a subdivision, they all remain. So again, we didn't change a lot of that. We just brought it over and reformatted that. The one thing that was new is an open space requirement. Originally, you only had a requirement for open space in PUDs, or which are plant unit developments, and in your PB district, of your professional business districts. So now there is an open space requirement in all districts for 15% of the project space. We talked about that. That might be a little high. We may want to lower that to 10%, but that is right now something that is new. So you all have received a copy, hopefully, of the draft of that section. So I didn't know if there was gonna be some discussion about that, but I would direct your attention to that if we wanted to talk about that a little bit more. Or if you had comments and you thought about it a little bit more after tonight, we can, again, address that either at a later date, or you can send me emails, or we can, you know, just, again, talk through that. But for the most part, Article Six, the biggest change would probably be the addition of that open space requirement. All right, I'm gonna stop real quick before we jump into signs in Chapter Eight, if there's any discussion on questions on Chapter Six at all. Okay, if not, I'm gonna just go down to our next one, which is Chapter Eight. So Chapter Eight, again, for some of you who might be new to this, again, signs were something that was already regulated in the previous ordinance and was actually done really well. We just, again, brought in a lot of stuff that was already there, did not change a ton of new stuff. But I will highlight where we did have some discussion with staff about making some additions and subtractions to the ordinance. The sections that are listed here are basically what are the sections in the ordinance and how the ordinance is broken down. So we talk about the purpose, and then we talk about exempted signs. Exempted signs are signs that do not require a permit, and they really have no regulations guiding them. So if you have something like a small, we'll go through those in a second. But basically exempted signs, there's no requirements for those, and you don't require a permit. They don't require any approval from staff. Then there's regulated signs that are not requiring a permit. So those are signs that have regulations, like a certain size that you're allowed to have, or a certain placement where you can place it on a building or on your lot. But they don't require a permit as long as you meet those requirements. Then there's regulated signs that require a permit. So those are signs that are going to require you to fill out an application and go to the town to request a permit for. Then we talk about specifics for site design, or say, construction, design, and maintenance of signs. Then we talk about specifically window signs, because those seem to have been an issue in the past, and that was one of the things that your ordinance assessment suggested that we pull out. So there's a specific section for window signs. Then we also added in something a little bit more detailed on outdoor advertising, which is basically billboards. So we'll talk about that, too. Then there's a section on prohibited and illegal signs, and then a sign on, a sign table summary. So what we wanted to do is make it easier for the public and also for your staff to understand and see a visual as to how signs. So we put a table in there that's a little bit easier to use. All right, let's go on to the next slide here. Okay, so this is some examples of those exempted signs. These do not, again, require a permit or any type of regulations. So it's basically government signs, traffic, health, safety, public safety, anything along related to those. Temporary lighting and displays on publicly owned property. Signs on commercial vehicles, wraps or decals. So that, you probably have seen those. Those are commercial vehicles that, you know, have to go in and get, you know, a sign, like painted onto the sign of a truck. Private for sale signs on private vehicles, manufacturer signs on gas pumps, the incidental signs that go on probably, you know, doors to businesses that indicate what type of credit cards they take, or the fact that their business hours, things along those lines. And then the last one, fence wraps on perimeter fencing where construction is occurring. And you can see an example of that in the picture. And the reason that is something new, that's a 160D requirement. That is something that came down from the state. A lot of small municipalities don't see that type of, you know, fence wrap, but those are one of the things that 160D does permit now. All right, any questions on the exempt signs? All right, I'm gonna move on. Okay, so these now are the regulated signs that don't require a permit. So again, we put in, there's some regulations on them, again, where they can be placed, how long they can be put up, or the size. And then, as long as you meet those parameters, these signs are gonna be allowed without a permit. So those are for sale signs. Those are for leasing of a building. Signs that advertise home produce or garden, so like a small produce stand outside the front of a house, and have a sign, a yard sale. Signs using during construction to say coming soon, or advertise that a building will be placed there, maybe tell the size of the square footage. Flags, badges, or insignias, accent lighting, and political signs. So I'm gonna talk about the last two really quickly. These are temporary signs, the accent lighting and political signs, the things that we changed with these. Accent lighting, originally, we had said that accent lighting would be allowed to line the, a for sale lot, or a lot that had items for sale. So we took that out, because we didn't want to have lighting over like a used car lot, and stuff like that. So those types of uses, we took out the accent lighting on, and now we've changed that to allow accent lighting over like eating areas and public spaces. And also around architectural features on a building, so around doors, or around windows, or around roof lines. And so that's where accent lighting will be allowed. And in terms of political signs, we changed that in alignment with, again, with 160D. Political signs are allowed to be placed in a right-of-way now, and they have to be taken down within a certain amount of time, or else the town can, or any individual can take them down. And there, you'll be able to see those regulations under the political signs. They're pulled out in their own section. And then other signs that do not require a permit, these are permanent signs, these are private on-premise traffic signs, and signs at service stations. Any questions there? Comments? Okay. All right, and these now is where the majority of the signs are going to fall, and this is regulated signs requiring a permit. So these are opening and sale signage, so that's a temporary sign. Those will be signs that'll say like coming soon, or like when a new business comes into town, they'll be allowed to have a temporary sign. But they do require a permit for the number of times they can do that per year, and then the duration at which those signs can stay up. Subdivision signage, so that's the signs that you're gonna see monument signs generally at the entrance to a subdivision. Home occupation signs, those are very small signs when somebody works from home or has a home business, that they might place on the outside of their house. B and B signage, originally, those were allowed only, so that's a, you know, bed and breakfast. And originally, those types of signs required a special use permit, so we eliminated the requirement for a special use permit and have added standards for when those can be used. Wall signs, those are just the typical sign you're gonna see outside any business that's attached to the wall. Hanging signs are those that project from, usually vertically from the building. Sandwich boards are the one that you'll see here in the picture. Freestanding signs are generally monument signs. You'll see those, again, usually at the beginning of, or outside of business, just any type of freestanding sign, whether it's elevated or low to the ground. Public information centers, that's something also that is shown here in the picture. Those are generally like campus signs, or something that's gonna give information to your downtown, or other types of directional signage. Outdoor advertising signs, again, that's billboards, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, and window signs. And again, those were pulled out a little separately. Those require, that's basically regulating based on the size of the signs. All right, again, before, now, we're gonna move into just a little bit about sign construction, design, and maintenance of signs. So this is going to just talk about the section, this, these sections, it's actually more than one section, about the materials that need to be used, that signs need to meet with your building codes. Making sure that your signs are securely mounted to the buildings, and then in terms of maintenance, that there's no missing parts, peeling paint, or that they're collecting litter or debris. Okay, and here's where we're gonna talk about those window signs real quick. So here's an example where a window sign is, takes up a good percentage of this window. So these window signs are not going to be permitted in your residential districts. They cannot exceed 35% of your window, and they are allowed for each window facing the right-of-way. So this, you know, this might be taking up more than 35%, or it might be right at 35%. You'll have to take the, you know, we'll measure by the outside of this, and there's procedures on how to measure the, you know, the outside of a sign. Those are also included in the ordinance as well. And then, let's see, I think there's just, okay, we didn't talk about billboards. We're going right into prohibited retail signs. I don't, I must have, yep, it must have come off here. So let me just take a moment before we talk about prohibited and legal signs to talk about the billboards real quick. So because the outdoor advertising has such a strong lobby in the state, those billboards are basically required to be, you have to allow them someplace in your community. So the billboards used to be allowed in a zoning district, and we've kind of taken that away. And instead of requiring them or allowing them in a zoning district, we're allowing them only on the frontage of two highways in the town. And what we did is Paige and John came up with a map that showed the areas where we're gonna not allow billboards. So the majority of Main Street, basically the entire downstairs, let me see if I can, give me a minute when we'll talk about it. I think I might be able to pull up that map and show you guys the map as to where it's not gonna be allowed. But primarily, it is from like Railroad Avenue South, Paige Whitless, the cross street, the bottom section of downtown that, where we said no billboards.
Um, Tumino Civil Drive.
Okay, so, and then it's along Main Street and Mill Street. So there, those are the areas of town that it will not be permitted in. And then it's also not allowed in what was originally your business district, your B2, and your, I'm sorry, your B3, which is now your corridor overlay district, or your commercial corridor. How do we say that? Commercial corridor overlay district. That's not gonna be allowed as well. So there'll be just, you know, a percentage of spaces where that will be allowed. We added in a lot of separation between the signs, so if there is a billboard, you can have another one within 800 feet. There's also a requirement that they can't be within so many feet of a residential use, a residential district, a church, or playground, or those types of things. So the places where billboards will be allowed will be very few and far in between, and it has to have frontage on those highway parcels. And usually DOT is going to be the one to permit those anyway. So this is just saying where in the town that those will be allowed. We can talk about that a little bit more, too, if anybody has any questions, comments on those. Okay, all right, let's move on. So this is gonna be your prohibited and illegal signs, and these are ones that are not going to be allowed anywhere in the town. I mean, again, unless there's specific language that would allow it, and I can tell you an example of that. All right, so roof signs, so anything that is mounted onto the roof of a building will not be permitted. Signs that resemble traffic signs, signs on the roadway, or signs in the right-of-way, those will be removed, usually within, I think we said 24 to 48 hours. Those signs, if those are placed illegally, will be removed. Signs obstructing access, buildings or windows are not permitted. Any sign posted on a utility pole, trees, rocks, ground, public furniture, lampposts, benches, etc., all of those would be removed and are not allowed. And then, moving on, oh, sorry, illuminated signs within residential zones. So midnight to 6:00 AM within 300, and 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM within 100 feet of a residential district. Now, one of the, one of the changes that we just added was that, sorry, bed and breakfast, sorry, there's a car starting, my apologies. Bed and breakfast are in residential zones typically, and we are allowing, and again, up for discussion, but we suggested that those could be externally lit so that anybody who is gonna be using those lodging facilities would be able to locate the sign. We thought that illuminating that sign, us just until the hour of 11:00 PM at night would be okay in a residential district. But then that light would have to be provided with a shut-off that would shut the light off at 11:00. So that's the only sign that I know of in a residential district that would allow illumination. Again, that can come out, that can stay in, that's really up for discussion, but we thought that that would be the one reason for, again, just for safety and convenience of the people that would be staying at the bed and breakfast. Off-premise signs, again, the only one that would be permitted is this outdoor advertising or a billboard. Otherwise, off-premise signs are not permitted. Portable signs, moving signs, or flashing lights, not allowed. Again, an example of a portable sign would be a sandwich board. So although a sandwich board, sorry, I'm near the highway too, so emergency vehicles going by. Portable signs are anything that's able to be moved. So again, a sandwich board is a portable sign, so because those are allowed, they're expressly permitted. They don't fall under this section here. And then in a discontinu, sorry, discontinuance of use. Anything that is over 30 days no longer being used, so if a building is vacated within 30 days, or a use goes out of business within 30 days, those signs have to be changed or brought into conformance with the ordinance. Okay. Any questions on those?
Karen, and I may have missed it, but was there a reference added back for the non-conformity, I noticed in another section? But if the alteration or repair is greater than 50% of the value, replacing that sign?
I think, I believe that's the current, the language that was there is, we moved it to all the non-conformities to Chapter One, or Article One. So I can double-check that the language is exactly the same. So it's 50%.
Yes, we need to include that if the copy, the logo, or there's a repair to the value that's greater than 50%, that the sign comes into compliance. So mainly, it would be bringing those older tall signs into compliance when the business changes a logo.
Okay, so if the repair value is greater than 50%, then that sign needs to be brought into conformance?
Yes, or the, or if the copy or logo is changed.
I believe that's all in Chapter One, but I will verify that it is, and if not. So we added, I don't know if you can see that, in the text of Chapter Eight, we added a section that says non-conformities, and we just refer back to Chapter One, because that is in, it's in Chapter One. But if that, we can always add that in there, and then say for the remaining non-conformities, see Chapter One. So we'll can add that little section in there, that little, this repair or change, we can add that in, in Chapter Eight. So it's, you know, drives the point home. I don't mind having something, if it's something that we really want to, you know, again, drive home, I'm fine having it in two places in the ordinance, as long as it's, you know, says the same thing.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna, any other comments on that? Okay, and I'm just gonna move on to our last screen here. And this is that table that I was talking about, to make it a little bit easier for everybody to kind of understand. And this is the last two pages of the ordinance, and what, this is what we cover. So this is exact, this is like literally a cut and paste of what is in there right now. We talk about commercial, residential, or leasing advertising signs. We'll give an example and a picture. And then we talk about is a permit required, the maximum number that you can have per site. If there's a maximum height, or mounting height for the sign, that's gonna be listed there. And then the surface area, so 16 square feet for non-residential buildings, or three square feet for residential buildings. And then it references the section of the ordinance and where the details are given for that sign. So as you can see, there's, these are, these are all the signs that are go in all districts. We break it down later on about, it's like two or, I think this is like two or three pages, or more actually, of this chart. And it breaks it down by all districts, and then it goes into signs that are permitted in just certain districts, and it talks about how many you're allowed to have. And again, gives these parameters for each one of those different signs, and talks about the sections. But you guys should have, again, a copy of that, and you can read that, you know, in your, in your spare time. You can flip through that. Any questions or concerns? You hate a picture and you really want it changed, you know, even those little details, if you're finding something that doesn't make sense, if it's not clear to you, please let us know, because we want to make this, again, this is really your ordinance, and we want to make this as usable and user-friendly for you. So again, if there's something that doesn't look right in this table, or if you have a question on a sign that just like, oh, that's square footed. oh, the square footage of that doesn't seem right, let us know because we want to, again, make this okay for you guys to use. All right, so that's all.
The table's a great idea.
Oh, good. Okay, I'm glad you liked that. Hey, Paige, I don't have anything else unless you guys have questions or comments. I wanted to talk about what we have coming up next. Well, there's the question slide. And then the next one is article seven. If I may, just take a second of your time and talk about what article seven is going to cover. So article seven is basically everything you have not seen yet. So article seven talks about like the design of your lots, the design of your buildings, mostly non-residential buildings. It'll talk about like how many windows you can have. And again, all of this is in your current ordinance, and we just brought it over and packaged it really nicely in article seven. There's not a lot of stuff that we created new in there. Some of the changes that were in your ordinance assessment that were recommended were changing some of the parking requirements. We brought in appendix A, which was your parking design standards, and those are in chapter seven. And then, so we talk about, again, anything, you know, article six talked about subdivisions and all of the design standards for subdivisions. But, you know, there's a lot that gets developed that's not necessarily in a subdivision, and that's all here in article seven. So then what we also brought into article seven are the use standards for cer, or sorry, design standards for certain uses. So it's going to be your sexually oriented businesses are discussed in chapter seven. Accessory structures are discussed in article seven. We referenced telecommunications and referenced the county in the end of article seven. So it'll be a very, again, nothing extraordinarily new in article seven. Again, just basically a reiteration of what you had, but we just packaged it a little bit differently rather than breaking it out by all the different zoning ordinances. We just put it together in there. So that'll be at our next meeting. And then at the next meeting, too, because article seven may or may not be a longer, it should not be a long discussion. We just kind of want to recap everything else that we've been talking about and see if you guys have any questions because it might be one of our last meetings before we present to council or to your commissioners, I'm sorry. And we want to really hash out anything else that you guys have concerns about before we get to that step. So Paige and I and John will talk about like where we are and what sections we still need to review, but I'm pretty sure you've seen most of it at this point. Article seven should be the last one, big one. But we want to make sure that if you have any questions or we need to go back and readdress something else, we can. So just let us know. Again, if you have any comments or questions, please pass them through to Paige or to John, and then they can get them to us. So I'm going to be quiet now and let you talk if you have any questions. Let me unshare this.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah. Does anyone have questions for Karen?
Hey, I'm a little confused about the billboards. There's one section, I'm looking at the things that, the documents that Amanda had sent out yesterday. There's one section that talks about billboards being regulated separately and differently from on-premises, business, and identification signs, intended that billboards be located away from residential areas, which I think is what you were talking about, right? And not being in certain areas. But then there's another section that says signs that are not permitted. The following signs are not permitted in town. And number seven on there is billboard advertising. I mean, that sounds pretty definitive. Is it just the billboard advertising as it says there that if it's larger than 300 square feet or something like that?
That might have been a leftover, and I apologize for that if we missed that in the section because originally, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but originally billboard, well, it was, it's supposed to say, I think it was supposed to say like off-premise signs. So.
Right, it's off-premise.
It should be not, it should not say billboard. It should say off-premise signs are not permitted. So, I'm sorry, what number was that? We'll change that.
Seven. It's like a section towards the end.
Okay, yeah, I know exactly where it is. It's the prohibited section. Okay, we'll change that. I'm sorry. That was probably just a typo. That was an oversight. So thank you for catching that.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
So our next, oh, go ahead, Boyd.
I know you've been working more closely with.
Wait, I think we missed that. I missed it.
Have a bad internet connection, so just you on there. Go ahead, Paige.
So our next planning board meeting in September is at 5:00. And then September 30th, we have a joint work session at 9:00 AM with, between the planning board and the town board. And I apologize that this is a workday. I hope, I hope some of you will be able to make it.
Do we have, do we have that invite yet, Paige, or is that to come?
No, it's to come. And that should, Karen, you thought about two hours, right?
It should be, I'm concerned, not that I'm concerned, but I just, you know, a long time talking via Zoom. So I would love to, we're going to try and be creative and come up with some interactive things to talk, to talk, to talk about and to do. I know we can do a couple of little surveys on the computer or on the phone. But yeah, I would not like it to go more than two hours. So what I'm going to try and do is send a lot of information, not a lot of information, but send short bursts of information to you before that meeting so that we can all come to the meeting prepared and ready to discuss so that two hours on a Zoom call does not seem as painful as it sounds. And again, if it changes and we can do it in person, I'm happy to come out. So just, you know, let me know. However, that, you know, I know the state of the world really is going to dictate as to how that meeting happens. But if it's, if it's on Zoom, like I said, I'll try to make it a little bit more creative, but it should not be more than two hours.
Can we go ahead and get an invite for that since it's a workday? I think sooner we lock it up, the better chance of some of us making it probably is.
Yes.
Okay, was, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm only hearing about it. So apologize for that.
Should we do the minutes, Amanda, since we have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead. And if everyone has the minutes from the July 15th meeting, if you looked those over or have already looked those over, do we have any changes, additions, corrections to those? Okay, if none, could I entertain a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, and we have a second as well. All those in favor, Amanda, if you'll do the roll call?
Russ?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Rose?
Rose is muted.
I think we may have lost her since she's driving. Yeah, you're good, Boyd. Go ahead.
Oh, that's good. Did you get Rose or?
No, she's not. I think she's lost her connection.
So is that good? Did you have a quorum for that, in other words?
Yes.
And Paige, any comments or anyone else?
I don't think so.
Not, thank you all for being here. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, and Amanda, if you'll do the.
Russ?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Alan?
Yeah.
Boyd?
Yes.
We'll try Rose. Go ahead, Boyd.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.